Yeah, I guess it is. I'd like to call the Celine City Council meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and I would remind those in the audience to please sign in on the back table, and there's also copies of the agenda for your convenience, and if you need hearing devices, they are also available in the back to my left. Members present this evening from city council or council members Girba, CO, Rice, Lesh, Harmout, Mayor Protam Dillon, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, city engineer Humphris, our new assistant city engineer, who we welcome this evening, community development director Harrington, and DPW director Searls. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Girba. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Lesh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences to excuse, so we'll proceed to our first public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time to make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And again, remember to cite a specific agenda item that you are referring to. You may begin.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor?
Your microphone needs to be turned off.
Yep, make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
Anyhow, then on now.
On now, Ben?
All right.
Okay, yep, please proceed, Chang Ming.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, friends, my name is Chang Ming Fan, local residence, local social entrepreneur. This evening, I want to chat a little bit about January 29th is the first strategic planet meeting of this city, and I really want to say something upfront, repeat what I said about strategic language. I beg my friends here to consider put a word of climate plan in our strategic plan. As you all know, the most ambitious plan led by Governor Whitmore, 2050, zero carbon emission, of course, of 2030 will reach half of that. What Celine people we can do? I've been told 95% of the people actually working in the office also is volunteer. This is the city of volunteerism led by Mr. Mayor and all wonderful people. We've got to do something about this planet. The things happen is not because of the leadership either White House change. I think it is we, the people, although Carter put solar panel on the roof of White House, Reagan put it down, Obama joining the Paris Convention, you know, last administration destroyed, now we go back again, lead again. But we, the people, really matters, especially our local government. I give you three numbers. You guess who is the highest in considering the climate change and crisis of global warming? Seventy-three, forty-seven, thirty-nine. You can say that. America is thirty-nine, people care. That is the statistic, Chinese seventy-three. So we have to do something, and we have upper hand, people, freedom, facilities, ideas. So strategic plan of Celine, this great city led by you, should put a language in there. At least we've got to know what happening. Let me ask everybody here, what is the BABA means? B-A-B-A, Buy America, Build America, and that is something we should really do it here, starting from Celine. Thank you.
Thank you, Chang Ming. Appreciate your comments. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? The record reflect there are none. Then we will proceed to, actually, let me defer to the city clerk. Do we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting, in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time?
Yes, sir.
Easy enough. Then we'll proceed to the first of two presentations. First up, we have plans for 2024 from Celine Main Street. We have the executive director of Celine Main Street with us, along with the board chair. Mary, we welcome you. It looks like the presentation is up on the screen. As soon as you are prepared to start, you may begin.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me here tonight. For the record, again, my name is Mary Detling. I'm the executive director for Celine Main Street, and after the wonderful State of the City address that Mayor Marl gave last meeting, I thought it would be a perfect time to talk about what Celine Main Street has planned for 2024, our new strategies and all of our new goals that we've come up with. And I'm very happy to say that a lot of what we have planned for downtown overlaps with what the city is working on with master planning and everything, so we're super excited to get it going. First off, I do want to say welcome to new council members Harmout and Lesh, and welcome back, Councilman CO. And I look forward to working with you in the new year and getting to know the new council members, so glad that you're here. So what's new for 2024? Let's dive into it. As you know, last year, we worked with consultants from Place and Main to create new strategic planning goals that will span the next five years. Since putting these goals into place, we realized we needed to revisit our transformation strategies. So what transformation strategies are, they're mostly defined by Michigan Main Street, and they give us structure and help us, help guide our priorities for creating an active and vibrant downtown. The last time we set our transformation strategies was in 2017. So we sort of, when we, when we updated our goals, we sort of realized that they didn't quite align with the 2017 transformation strategies, so we kind of back, backed ourselves into these, the two strategies of experienced-based retail economy and active living. They're based on what we need in downtown now, and we feel that these strategies closely align with what Celine Main Street's goals and what our vision is. So I'm going to read them to you real quick. Transformation strategy number one, experienced-based retail economy for leveraging and supporting the growth and development of already established experienced-based retail business and entrepreneurs or intentionally incentivizing new experienced-based retail businesses in the downtown or district. Transformation strategy number two, active living for developing an environment that is entrepreneur-friendly and supports the growth and development and intentionally incentivizes businesses, which serves the needs of the residents in the community and greater region. This could include convenience goods and services, health and wellness related to businesses, but we are truly going to focus on more on arts and culture, outdoor recreation, indoor entertainment, and activity that support the needs and workers, needs of workers and residents in the community. So in adopting these transformation strategies, we were then tasked by Michigan Main Street to create overarching goals and measures of success. Then we also come up with projects and activities to help meet those measures of success. Our overarching goals literally come directly from our 2028 vision, which we wrote last year during our strategic planning retreat. They include Celine is a social and commercial hub for entertainment, shopping, dining, innovation, and the arts. Celine has vibrant storefronts and streetscapes and will be a destination for sidewalk strolls and sightseeing. People will find downtown Celine to be the ideal meeting place for friends, families, and community celebrations throughout the year. Locals will take pride in our downtown, supporting its growth and preservations with a dedicated network of volunteers and sponsorships. So this is a list of some of our measures of success. These are, they are really the majority of them, but they all have in common having a vibrant and active downtown filled with more people on a regular basis, giving people more reasons to come downtown, and getting more people involved in making things happen downtown. A few items that overlap the city goals include working with the city to develop a community gathering space, creating a social district downtown, and filling the vacancies that are downtown. One of the things we will be participating this, in the spring, which we're very excited about, is a business recruitment primer, which is a technical resource awarded to us by Michigan Main Street, and that should help us achieve the goals of filling these vacancies. As far as projects and activities that support these measures go, I have a complete list on our website on the, on the page that is labeled Blog, if you're interested in learning more, and all of our events have a lot to do with that, so I will next go over the upcoming events for 2024. So we had our last annual celebration in 2020. We're bringing that back this year to celebrate volunteers, provide information on how community members who are interested can support downtown. We're bringing back Ladies Night again. It was a, we started that last year, and it was a good success. We might add a second Ladies Night in the fall, but that's to be determined at this point. We are working on something, though. Salty Summer Sounds is returning this year. It's too important to our downtown businesses to scrap, and we're experimenting with a new space by hosting it in the parking lot on South Ann Arbor and Henry Street. We will also be hosting our first annual golf outing this year to help raise funds specifically to offset the price of, or the costs associated with Salty Summer Sounds. And then, of course, our fall favorites, Oktoberfest, trunk-or-treat, and the Coco Crawl. Hopefully, the Coco Crawl will have a little something extra this year as well. So how city council can help? This is important. With all the plans that both the city and Celine Main Street are hoping to complete in 2024, here are some very important ways that you can help. First, visit downtown. Shop downtown. I know a lot of you already dine downtown, but I'm not sure you realize how much seeing your faces in the shops mean to the local business owners. Second, approve initiatives that focus on downtown, like the upcoming approval needed for the study on the public space. Your actions and support matter more than words. Financially, not only with direct support through the city, but through private donations, volunteering at Oktoberfest, our biggest fundraiser, golfing with us in June. Volunteer. It's a great way to meet people who support downtown, and it expands your reach as council members. And help all of the Celine community by encouraging unique small businesses to come into town. That's it. Thank you very much. I have included, I think you should all have a copy of our impact report, and I'm not going to go over that specifically, but if you would like to talk more about how Celine Main Street impacts the downtown and how it impacts Celine as a whole, I'd be happy to have that discussion with you. And thank you so much for all you do for Celine, and I look forward to achieving some goals in the next year.
Very comprehensive but succinct presentation. We appreciate that, Mary. Would the board chair care to make any comments at this time? Well, we appreciate you being here, Jill. This evening, I'm actually going to start to my extreme right and end to my extreme left, so for questions and comments, we'll begin with Lesh and end with Harmout. Mary, just a few items. I appreciate the focus on business attraction and retention. I made mention in my State of the City address, and it will be communicated again in this week's video, that one of our primary responsibilities, not just for the downtown, but for the entire city, will be to fill these vacant storefronts and to recruit some dynamic, successful, sustainable businesses in the next 12 months. So I look forward to discussing that with you, and I think that'll be a topic for, for consideration at our upcoming Community Recruitment and Retention Team meeting, which evidently, from my discussion with Mr. Harrington, I believe needs to be rescheduled because he has a conflict. So I think we're aiming for early February, but we want to make sure that somebody from Celine Main Street is present.
Absolutely.
And also, at that time, I look forward to having a more focused conversation about a social district, vetting that, and then coming up with a proposal that can be submitted to city council for review, either by the end of this quarter or the very beginning of the second quarter 2024.
Yes.
But we, again, appreciate the presentation this evening. More importantly, we appreciate your work and leadership, and please extend those thanks to, to your board and all your volunteers as well.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Again, I'll start with Councilmember Lesh. Do you have any questions or comments for our guest?
Just comment, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that I love Celine Main Street and all of your activities. You guys do a wonderful job. You know, volunteerism in America these days is kind of a problem, but you know, I will do what I can to get your troops up and going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lesh. Councilmember CO, any questions or comments?
The only comment I have is that I would echo what Mr. Lesh says. My wife and I and our friends are frequently downtown, either dining or being, you know, gathering in some kind of a social venue, maybe just even over a beer or something like that. The question I have, I guess, is where's the golf outing going to be?
Right now, it's not completely planned, but we believe that it might be at Rustic Glen. That is the plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Very good. Mayor Protam Dillon, any questions or comments for our guest?
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate that you've brought this to us. I think there's a lot of information. I think there's some hefty goals, and so I guess, what is your timeframe? Like, what are your measurables in your timeframe?
Every measurable has a different timeframe. So our strategic planning, as we started, as we discussed last year, it extends over five years, so, and our vision does as well. So the transformation strategies that we have, we've adopted, they can be ongoing until we feel like we have achieved all the, the standards that we want to. So the timeline isn't, isn't, is, is going to be different for every goal, so.
Because I look at, like, the first goal that you have, and it talks about Celine is social and commercial hub for entertainment, shopping, dining. I mean, it hits all of the buttons, and it's just, are you going to focus on shopping at one point, or are you going to try to tackle all of these all at the same time and sort of see how it?
Well, that's, that's a very good point. Now, that is part of our 2028 vision, so I think that in order to create that hub, the first, the number one priority would be filling the vacancies with experienced-based retail, things that will attract people into town, whether it be due to their customer service, whether it be due to what's happening in the store or what they offer. So that would be something that I think would be a really great thing to see downtown, and we'll go from there. So that hopefully will start making moves on before the end of the year and be filling some of those spaces.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And then my last question is, are, as part of this process, are you looking at the expansion of your footprint of, of Main Street and, like, you know, expanding your boundaries?
Yes. As we had talked about last year, I think, in relation to our goals with council, we had talked about expanding it, I think, to McKay Street, include the businesses on McKay Street, which I think they already do. I think we go from McKay to Henry to Lewis to Harris. So we're going to have to revisit that and look at that a little bit more seriously this year. Last year, as I was getting kind of my feet wet and, and getting everything under, getting all of my experience underneath me so that I can do better this year. We're going to do more action this year than, than last year it was learning, so.
Right. Because I'd really love to see Henny Field Incorporated. I think it's a great resource. I've said this repeatedly. It's sort of, you know, a hidden gem in our community, and it's an underutilized resource. So I think that there's a lot of benefit to expanding, so that would be included to host events in that location. And then my last comment is, you know, about helping. I just, I mean, anyone that's ever seen my social media knows that I definitely shop and dine and visit our downtown often, and I volunteer and somehow convince my husband to help, too. So I appreciate that you bring these to us. I think we, we all kind of can, can check those boxes and, you know, encourage our friends to also join us.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you.
Very good. Councilmember Girba, any questions or comments?
Just a couple. When we talk about, you know, as Mayor Protam Dillon had mentioned, about the different areas and expectations, entertainment, shopping, do we also bring in the idea of living downtown, encouraging the density development on some of those streets to start bringing in more residents, I would say, in that kind of area?
That would be a wonderful thing to do, and I, and we are in support of a lot of those initiatives, but they're not yet to be, like, we don't have a plan yet. So I know that Community Development Director Harrington is working on certain things, and we've been in discussions, so that will come up once that a more, a more solid plan has been created.
That's kind of what I was hoping, was that you're part of that initiative and that we're working on that, so I think we're talking about that later tonight, too.
Yes.
One of the other things, Main Street has always been doing its aspect of operations connected with the state's program and the national program. How do you see that continuing to develop, or how is that going to benefit going forward?
Well, again, we have a master level association, so we are, we are a master level Main Street, which is the top Main Street level that you can get, and we have a very good relationship with the state. And recently, the, a representative from Main Street America came out to Celine and met with Mayor Marl and Colleen, and so we are, we got a really good review on that. There were some really small things that we needed to make changes on in order to continue the, the ability to be considered a master level Main Street for next year. One was adding a logo to our website, which is done, and the other one was literally aligning our, our, our work plans and goals to the strategic, or the transformation strategies. So that's when we realized that we needed to change them, because what we're trying to do in downtown didn't match what we were doing back in 2017 anymore. So life has changed since then. So we reviewed that, worked with them, and we are continuing to do that, so we have a good relationship.
You're continuing to invest in anticipating funding to keep these programs moving?
Yes, yes, so.
And then, I think the only other thing I said, what else can our community, I mean, all of us in council have in some form or manner, either be it by owning property downtown or submitting donations, that type of thing, have done things? What can this community and some of our businesses do to support that you don't feel there are ways that aren't being achieved at this time?
Well, we're always looking for additional sponsorship. We will be rolling out different levels of, or different ways of being individual donors in the near future, so that will be happening, and so, you know, if, we'll have all the information at our February 6th Celebration and Information Night, but one of the things that we're planning and doing is making it very easy for individuals to donate on a monthly level, and that will make quite a bit of difference. So, I mean, if you don't have the time to volunteer, for example, you could give us $10 a month, and that would, you know, that could add up if several other people did it as well, and it would make a huge difference, so that, yeah.
And I'm glad you're moving forward with, because all that work you've done on the strategic plan, I think, was a benefit to your organization, and hoping to see all that implemented will be a successful approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Rice, questions or comments for our guest?
Couple of comments and then a question. First comment is, I feel very strongly that this year you have been able to make a better connection with city staff and council and, and really developing those goals and those things that are going to help move the city forward, so I really commend you on that. I think the relationship that's being built here is wonderful, and it was very, very needed. I also appreciate these periodic updates, but with that, I wonder if we could open a form of communication where, not to say spoon-feed, but could you spoon-feed us a little bit up here at council? And just, just, you know, it's very easy for us to use our platforms, you know? I can always, you know, repost something that Celine Main Street has posted, that's very easy, but those really, like, keen talking points that we could use to encourage, you know, sponsorships and things like that as appropriate within our neighborhoods and things like that, I think that would be really, really beneficial. You know, as Dean mentioned, you know, we, we live and work in this, in this area, so, you know, it's, whatever you can provide us with, we can provide to friends and neighbors, and we can help kind of build that momentum going forward. So I don't know if it's some sort of, you know, monthly update to council via email or something along those lines where we could just, you know, then?
I would be happy to work on something like that and see what, what way was, would work best.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Other than that, I look forward to February 6th and all the great things that you guys have going on this year.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Harmout, any questions for our guest?
Yeah, I also have just a statement and a question. I think that alignment to the strategy is really paramount for this next year, and I'm glad that you guys see that you're doing that and continuing to do that. I think that these events are really important and that they really bring a lot of camaraderie and social openness to the city. I do have a question. I did see some pop-ups when we were having different events in some of the vacancies. Is that part of the strategy?
That, it was something that we tried with Fourth Fridays, and we will continue to do on occasion, so, yeah, we will continue, we, a lot of the downtown shops have decided that maybe Fourth Fridays isn't the way to go. We might look at a different day of the week. We are looking at different days of the week. I'm not saying we might, but we want to do something every month, and given that opportunity, we will continue to try to program pop-ups in the vacant spaces.
That's nice to fill those vacancies. Have we conducted a formal survey within the city of Celine to sample residents about what they would like to see? what they would like to see downtown?
Yes. Yeah. So I believe we did that with a pulse poll back in 2022, right before, right prior to me beginning in my, my position here. And I know that it was also done through the master planning system. So, so we, and we found out the same things. So, yeah, they matched. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Remind council and the community again of that, that forthcoming event.
February 6th, Annual Celebration and Information Night. So if you'd like to learn more about how you can help downtown be a vibrant place, come through the 109, and we will be happy to tell you.
So at the 109, and what is the time for that?
Between 6:00 and 9:00.
Very good. Excellent. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Jill. We're going to proceed to our second presentation, item of the evening, which is sanitary sewer evaluation. Engineer Humphress.
Hi. I'd like to introduce Robert Chaworski with OHM. He's here tonight, and he will be going over this presentation. Oh, thank you. He'll get that up and going for us. My brief introduction is just to remind council that in August of 22, when we were getting ready for the East Belt Sanitary Sewer Project, we brought OHM in to do a little bit of modeling on our system to reduce the needed improvements as part of that project. We were able to reduce the scope of that project from 3,500 linear feet down to 2,100 linear feet. And Robert's going to give a little bit more background on how some of the work that they've done, hopefully will, and work that we want to do in the future as part of our master plan, will help us look at our overall collection system as a whole. So I'm going to turn over to Robert now.
All right. Thanks, Tasha. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Evening.
I'm sure this is your favorite part of the evening. We're going to talk about your sewer system.
That's important.
Yep, yep. I'm with OHM Advisors, Robert Chaworski. I'm the firm's collection system practice leader, and I'm the project manager for the recent sewer projects we've done for the city. Tonight, I'm going to talk about three items that we've been looking at for your sewer system. That is peak flows, growth in the urban development area, and an update that's on the agenda for later for the sanitary sewer master plan update. So to start, we're going to talk about peak flows. Peak flows in a sewer system are the critical thing that drives all the upgrades that concern your sanitary sewer system. Things like treatment plant upgrades, retention or storage tanks, and of course, the pipes in the collection system. Tonight, I'm speaking specifically about the sanitary sewer system. The city's sewers, you may know, are separate. There's a storm sewer system that carries the rain off to the river. And then there's a sanitary sewer that carries the waste from the homes to the treatment plant. Tonight, we're talking about the separate sanitary sewer system. The, the sanitary sewer system, even though it's a separate system that carries the storm water off, rainwater does leak into the separate sanitary sewer system. These are pipes that are underground, just natural. All systems have this, that defects form. And rainwater does leak into those, those separate sanitary sewer pipes. So it's really rain events that drive the large peak flows that occur in these systems. And the way that we develop those peak flows is we look at that relationship between how much rain occurred, and what is the peak flow that develops in the sanitary sewer system. When we looked at the previous modeling that was done, it's from the December 2022 basis of design for the treatment plant updates. That's the previous modeling. It showed a peak flow at the wastewater treatment plant in the modeling of 17 MGD, or what we call millions of gallons per day. And when we look at this, this previous peak flow projection, it seemed a little high. The operators of the wastewater plant said that's a little high based on the flows that we typically get and we see during rain events. And that's not uncommon. In doing planning for capital upgrades in these systems, you know, us civil engineers, we're a conservative bunch, and we typically start with more conservative assumptions. And then as a project develops, we can tighten up those assumptions and maybe optimize the system a little bit. So when these numbers looked a little high, that's not unusual. What OHM did is we took a second cut in looking at them. And that's what I'm going to talk about with the peak flows here. Our approach in doing that was, we looked at how much the sewer system peaks when conditions are rather dry, and how much when it's rather wet. In these systems, the wetter the preceding conditions are, the more the peak flows are, the higher the peak flows get. What we noticed is, in the previous modeling that was done, most of the storms, the rain events that were looked at, they happened on rather wet conditions. So that can have a tendency to kind of bias that modeling towards being a little on the high side. So we used an approach that we call the antecedent moisture model, and did a rigorous update to the modeling approach to come up with these peak flows. And the end result is, we, we ran a 50-year continuous simulation. So we took 50 years of historic precipitation that occurred, and used that as our basis to come up with an update to design peak flows. So it's a very accurate process, tightening up those, those assumptions a little bit. And when we did that, we were able to find that the recommended future design peak flows from the treatment plant were reduced from the 17 MGD in the previous work to just 13 MGD. It's a 23% reduction. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's actually kind of a big deal when you're looking at all the different upgrades that could be needed at the treatment plant and in the collection system. And then those results were incorporated into the basis of design for the wastewater treatment plant project that you're, you're currently undertaking. So that's some good news. We're able to reduce the peak flows and optimize the improvements a little bit at the treatment plant. So that's kind of the first, the first piece we wanted to speak to tonight to kind of lay the foundation for what's to come. Next, we looked at growth in the urban development area. And this is the area that is designed to serve future growth in the townships, Lodi and Celine Townships. The, we were asked to look at this because there was a funding source where there was a few pipes that needed to be upgraded. And there were some questions on, are those pipes the right size? Are they really needed? And it came down to, those pipes are primarily conveying flows from the urban development area. So we were asked to take a look at, what are the right flows coming from that district to support the sizing of, of the pipe? And it's the main sewer, I'll show it on a map in a second. It's the main sewer that goes under the Celine River along Michigan Avenue. And when we looked at the, the flows from the urban development area, the land use projections, what we noticed is, the previous projections just kind of took the whole areas en masse. You know, a big lump of the area. And we were able to look at it and say, you know, there are some areas that are already developed in those districts. There are other areas that are ponds, or streams, or wetlands that are really not developable. So we're able to kind of take those out of the land use that would be available for development, and then update the projections for the number of what we call REUs. That's what's in the table here, residential equivalent units. It's like a single, a single home. We were able to, with those, accounting for those, those land types, able to reduce the number of REUs that were going to be in each of these different districts in the UDA. And you can see the overall reduction in REUs is about 23%. So again, tightening up those assumptions to kind of get a little bit better, a little bit tighter with our, with our analysis. So next, we took those fewer number of residential equivalent units. We also found that we could reduce the flow per residential equivalent unit. The previous analysis was a little bit more conservative, and we tightened it up. We actually didn't go beyond anything that's standard. We actually followed a flow per RU that's published in the 10-state standards, which is the guidance document for the 10 states in the Midwest. So we just used the standard values. That was, that allowed us to lower the flows a little bit from the UDA. And then finally, we were able to reduce the peak wet weather flows from the modeling I described a moment ago. So those three, three, three items came together and allowed us to kind of reduce the flows that we saw going through these pipes. And the end result of that was, this is a map now of the sanitary sewer system. The pipe that circled there is that pipe that was going under Michigan, or along Michigan Avenue under the, the river. That's one we were asked to look at as part of the, the funding program. And we were able to find that that 2,100 feet of sewer actually doesn't need to be updated. It can actually handle the flows from this portion of the UDA, and, you know, and from the portions of the city that are upstream of it. So that's a reduction in 2,100 feet of sanitary sewer upgrades that were needed from, from that, from that analysis. Additionally, the city is undertaking a project, project called the Phase 1 SRF project. That is, SRF refers to the funding source that's being used to do the, do the work. As part of that project, the city is going to be looking at the sources of where that rainwater leaks into the sewer system. Larry and his team are going to look at tightening up that sewer system, trying to get those flows out to reduce the flows even further. So this is just best practices that you do with a sewer system. So with those things, the flow reductions, hopefully the work that the SRF project does to reduce the, the wet weather flows, there's a good chance here that if we apply this process to the rest of the system, we might find that other parts of the city don't need as many big upgrades with the collection system either, like the yellow line that goes through the middle of the map on the screen there. That's currently in your, in your capital improvement program. We might find that maybe a smaller portion of that project might be needed. So that sets us up for updating the sanitary sewer master plan. So that's where we want to go next, where the item you have in front of you later tonight from OHM is a, a proposal to update your sanitary sewer master plan. Take these updated peak wet weather flows that we talked about. Take the updated growth projections we talked about. Review other improvements that might be needed in the system, and update the sanitary sewer master plan, hopefully to show less investment is needed in that sewer system to meet standards. And that's the end of my presentation. Happy to take questions.
I actually enjoyed that. Very informative.
Made sewers interesting.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're going to run for mayor, you got to have a little bit of a passion for, for infrastructure and vital services. So I'm probably an outlier, but as are my colleagues at, at the dais. But no, that was good. My apologies. Councilmember Girba, Mayor, or City Manager, was this item discussed at the wastewater water treatment ad hoc committee?
Back when we did the original modeling, we switched to OHM for modeling. We discussed it, but it hasn't been updated, no.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to provide you both an opportunity to comment before we do a round of questions, if in fact, this item had been discussed or deliberated on by, by our ad hoc committee. Thank you. City Engineer Humphress, anything you'd like to add before we open up for questions?
I'm thinking so.
Okay, very good. Again, I'm going to start to my extreme right and end to my left. So Councilmember Lesch, do you have any questions or comments for our guest?
Just as a scientist, I'm very happy to see some good modeling going on and good, good use of information to pull together some, looks like, pretty significant savings.
Thank you. Mr. Seal?
One question. Your UDA growth, does that anticipate annexation of any of the land to the west of town?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, that's what that is. Yes, if you go back to that.
The page that Janet, or Mayor Pro Tem Dillon has, has opened, Mr. Seal, you're looking at the same one, yes?
I am.
It's all that, that yellow area to the, to the west, to the northwest, and to the southwest.
And that pink as well.
Yep, into both Lodi and, and Celine Township.
So the yellow is all new?
Yes. And in urban, yeah, the UDA is urban development, I forget what the area. And it was all of the Lodi and Celine Township annexation. That, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Dillon, any questions or comments for our guest?
Thank you. Thank you for providing this in a, in an easy to understand manner. My one question is, when we talk about the West Belt and the path it travels, it travels along the Celine River. So how will any work to this be affect the Riverwalk project, the dam review project, all of these things that we have sort of going on at the same time, the west side sidewalk?
So, those are very good questions. And the, the Celine, the Mill Pond Riverwalk project, which we are now calling the Celine River Valley Phase 1 Pathway Project, has been located adjacent to the woods, adjacent to the ridge in Mill Pond and off of the actual river to follow, to give us access to our sanitary sewer system. And it's also being constructed with a cross-section that will allow us to drive our equipment on it, tractor trucks and such, to service our sanitary. So that would be the first section here, you know, along Mill Pond. And that also will allow anything that happens in the future to keep it away from the water's edge. So that's what we're doing with Phase 1 of the River Valley Walkway. I think that, does that answer all of your questions with?
I think so. And there's no impact then, the one, the Michigan Avenue piece that was always sort of a tie-in with like, the sidewalk and a piece like that. So if you're saying that that doesn't need to be ups, would it need to be lined? Or would there need to be infrastructure work on that?
And, and right now, we are in the process of just starting, like, this winter, all of our condition assessment of our entire West Belt Sewer District. And there is a map later in the packet that shows our three, our three main districts. So as part of our 2019 Asset Management Report, we only televised 10 or 11% of our sanitary sewer system. And so that was, that's a small amount for doing a full condition assessment. And a part of our overall transition to an asset management-based plan, we're doing inventory of our systems first, and then condition assessment is the second step. And so what we're accomplishing this winter with SRF funding, and that's also in the agenda packet tonight, is, is doing a condition assessment in our entire West Belt District. And by doing that, we will actually be able to answer that question once the condition assessment is done. And the nice thing about what we're using, we're planning to do lining of the pipes and fixing that doesn't require digging it up. The, the issue right now with our existing capital improvement plan, our existing asset management plan, is it has us replacing, upsizing, digging up 20,000, over 20,000 linear feet of our sewer district. And to give you an idea of how much that costs, East Belt, we just replaced 2,100 linear feet, and that was about $3.5 million. So there's a substantial amount, there's a chance for substantial savings if, if we can reduce those capacity upgrades that we committed to. So by doing all of the condition assessment rating, we can then do all of this at a much lower cost rate by lining the pipe in place and not digging up the pipe and replacing it. But I don't know right now, because that pipe was not rated, if that pipe needs to be lined or fixed once it gets the actual condition assessment done.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Girba, any questions or comments for our guest, or for City Engineer Humphress?
Just a few. We always keep talking about infiltration, INI, basically. And I know you're going to be doing an assessment on it. But it seems like, in the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work towards that. How much more, I guess, capacity can we gain by continuing to invest in doing that? At some point, returns aren't going to be as much as what you would anticipate. Are we anywhere near that? Or do we feel that the INI is still very significant?
I'll start, maybe you can. So we've, we do think that we have an opportunity to reduce our flows from INI, and also from redoing our actual model inputs. And I'll let Robert maybe expand a little bit on the, the existing moisture conditions that our existing plan has after I'm done talking about the INI. For the condition assessment and doing actual, in, we have not done any sewer, right? We haven't, we've just done manholes so far, right? Yeah. So we haven't done any actual pipes yet. So we're, we're doing the condition assessment on all the pipes this winter, and we'll follow up with the actual pipe rehabilitation. The only rehabilitation we've done to date has been on manholes. So that is the INI reduction portion of it. And then I'll let Robert talk a little bit about the, the flow monitoring and the assumptions that are in our existing model.
Yeah. One thing that we look at when assessing a sewer system is, we look at what's called the peaking factor. That's a ratio of, of the peak flow to the average flow. And that gives us a real nice indicator of how wet or how much INI there is in a system. When we do that for Celine, we don't see peaking factors that are way off the charts high. We also don't see peaking factors that are way off the charts low either. They're kind of medium. If we have small, medium, and large here, you're in the medium category. So it certainly is in the range where it makes sense to continue to do INI removal. One thing that you do with condition assessments and evaluating INI is we take each source, and we can calculate if it's cost-effective to remove. Where cost-effectiveness is a function of, what's the cost to just let it keep coming in and treat it for 20, 30, 40 years versus the cost to fix it and get it out? And with, those cost-effective assessments are done for each source that's, that's examined. So that's how we would look at that. Another thing I'll just put a plug in for is that, to some extent, INI removal is kind of like playing whack-a-mole. We're all familiar with that, with that arcade game. It's a never-ending process. It is a best practice to continuously, and many communities and cities are doing continuous asset management where on a regular cycle, they're televising maybe 2% or 5% or maybe in some cases, even 10% of, of their sewer system every year, so that you're continuously looking for that INI and keeping it out. So that's something to think about for your long-term asset management.
And how will this, I mean, we're going to be voting on this later. How will this play in with the INI study that we just did two years ago for wastewater treatment? When we had to submit that as all part of our grant. Are we repeating some of the same steps? Or will this take that information and?
I assume you're talking about the study that was done shortly before I started, like, the sanitary sewer evaluation studies. So this is, is the next, that was done mostly for our funding requirements for SRF. SRF requires quite a lot of hoops to jump through to get our funding for that. And so this is, is taking it a step further and reducing those assumptions and making less conservative assumptions in our water model, or our sanitary sewer model. I, I left my map back over there. But I'm, I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to substantially reduce the amount of improvements we've committed to the state by going through this process.
And then one of the questions, you know, the concern is, we have two package plants to the west of us. Are there any assumptions in what you've just done by remodeling this, in the event that those plants should fail, that we take them on? Would we have capacity to do that?
So we, this is part of our master plan that we're proposing to do next. So that what, what Robert presented on tonight is, is kind of the first look at things. We've given OHM a little bit of our data. They've done enough to, to give us confidence that we should spend more money on modeling to move forward to the next step. And I do think that that should be considered as part of our master plan. So that's part, that would be in the UDA district. And you're right, and you say two, are you talking about Andalina and?
River.
Okay, that's to the south. Okay.
And then just lastly, if you have another one. When you're mentioning the UDA to the northwest of Celine, I believe there's more property that's potentially identified than just what shows on that map, should anything happen further down Water Works and all that, unless it covers all of that?
No, it does not.
That's, that's my issue.
Yeah, there would be three properties, three large properties, excuse me, along Water Works that could potentially be developed and annexed in the ensuing years.
So my concern is only with the Lodi. So my concern is only with the Lodi, well, is with the Lodi Township, that even though you've evaluated the number of units, I don't feel that this effectively reflects what we're potentially seeing that could happen.
And I will, I'm, we took this off of, I think it was a 2019 study?
Yep.
Yes.
There's a 2017 master plan that established the UDA. And I would add that if you, if you really developed that at two units per acre, you would be doubling the size of the city. I mean, if not more than that, actually. I mean, it's, although I understand that it doesn't cover everything, and it's still a very aggressive estimate to even assume that we're going to be able to annex all that before the wastewater treatment plan or the sewer lines would need to be upgraded further. But I will step aside, I step aside.
Yeah, and just as we're looking at this, I'm not sure what period of time this is supposed to be effectively covered too, because it'll take years to do all that. The only other one is, what, East Belt or Central Belt, I know this is spoken about in West Belt, when will we address that? And how will we address that?
Yes, so central, oh, as far as, well, as far as rehabilitation and condition assessment, that is scheduled as a part of our existing contract. Oh, Larry's right there, yes. And as far as the capacity improvements, there's a substantial amount of capacity improvements recommended as part of Central Belt. And I'm very hopeful that the modeling will reduce those. The modeling that we're proposing to do with this proposal is on the agenda later tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Gearbo caught something that's important. And we can confirm subsequent to tonight's meeting, but for the purpose of the analysis, I think it would be unfortunate if we didn't include some of the adjacent parcels to the west along Waterworks Road that, again, are also potentially poised for development and annexation. You have, by the looks of that map, one of the parcels enumerated on Waterworks, but there would be two others directly to the west.
And I believe you had some potential of, it wouldn't necessarily go through the West Belt existing, that there might be a different route that would be proposed.
Yes, and I wonder if that's better shown on, well, kind of, yes.
There's a number of things into that, I think we just kind of are assuming right now, but I appreciate this approach, hopefully it'll reach that. My whole thing is that I know as we've discussed this, there's been a number of components and seeing us go from, and I think Mayor Protem Dillon had mentioned to me, going about a third adjustment to what we had out there, trying to understand going from 17 down to 13 and what we actually currently are doing. There's so many components to this, but as long as we're getting a number set of eyes, yours and everybody else looking at this, I think this is the right way to move forward. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your input. We will definitely work with Community Development Department on the UDA boundaries.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
I wanted to turn back on something that you had mentioned. And your recommendation was to, I believe, and I should have written it down, I apologize, to look at, look at the model, and again, I apologize if I'm saying this incorrectly, like, reevaluate this yearly, correct? Because my concern is that this is particularly a system that flows alongside rivers and tributaries, climate change scenarios, things like that. And I have somewhat of a science background to understand how models work. I just want to make sure that we're building into this, just like reevaluation assessment. I don't want to get us to a scenario where 10 years from now, we're like, ah, we should have, we should have adjusted this sooner, and now we have to go back in and adjust, you know, dramatically. So just sort of what is your theory behind, you know, continuously updating this and making sure that we don't get too far down the road with this particular number? And we're kind of keeping an eye on it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the overall plan that we as staff have in mind is to, you know, we're starting with the stuff that was done as part of our SAW grant back in 2017, 2019 data. As I explained before, we want to do condition assessment and then rehabilitation. And then as part of that process is when we're recommending kind of starting this master plan development, redoing our modeling. I think at some point in the near, in the future, after some rehabilitation is completed, we will actually be putting more meters in the ground for our sanitary and re-metering the system to calibrate the model. The metering that was done for our SAW grant was done in 2017 and 19, and as Robert spoke to in his presentation, it was under very wet conditions, which skewed our model to a more conservative analysis or results. And I think that our goal as staff has been to get this asset management approach, get more condition assessment data done, so that we can rehabilitate and then remodel to help bring, so I think all of that will be coming together in the coming years. That's our kind of short-term plan for the sewer modeling and to keep a hold on, I guess, the changing conditions.
That all makes sense to me. One of the things that, there's kind of two ways to look at this. One, we're going back and we're looking, we're reevaluating things that we sort of made assumptions about, and we're finding ways to make it easier, make it cheaper, all of these things. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we don't put off something that needed some retention and end up back in a place where we've, you know, we've been with the wastewater treatment plant, things like that. So I know that this is a fine balance that you've been playing. I appreciate all of this information that you're providing to us, so that we can continue to pay attention to these things as we make these decisions. I feel very well informed by all of the information that you've provided, so I appreciate that for one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Harmout, any questions for our guest or City Engineer Humphreys?
Yeah, just a comment. I think it's really important to councilperson Bryce's comment is that this is really important that we get this right, because it goes into our waterways, and our waterways, if they, you know, overflow, it's going to be a problem for pollution standpoint. So it sounds like there's additional assessment that needs to be done to update to the peak annex assumption, based on what I've heard at this DAAS. Also, that would, I would like to support the idea that we do this on a yearly basis moving forward. Then I had a question, is when is our current condition assessment going to be deemed finished?
Do you want to tackle that one? I'm just going to speak real quick to the annual basis and our budgeting projections now. Engineering Department has included asset management modeling for all, to occur on annual basis. And one of the biggest things that council supports is like investment in our GIS system, which is a database that stores all of our inventory. So we absolutely are, I think spending a little bit of money on studies can save us millions of dollars on capital. So that's, that's my answer to that first part of your question. I'll let Larry talk about the condition assessment.
At this, at this time, we have a large push because we have some SRF funds on the line that's going to help cover the cost for the rehab that we find necessary. Over time, we're going to be continually inspecting and rating the sewer. We're storing the data in GIS. And once we have, once, the more data you have, the easier it is to extrapolate out your budget. I know we talk about a lot of the INI, but we also have the risk of failure. From my perspective, we're looking at that also. We don't want sewer collapses, we want sewer rehabs. We don't want to dig sewer pipes out, we want to reline them in place and lower the overall cost of our capital reinvestment. We're going to continue, and council, you gave us the contract, we're in contract for sewer rehabilitation contract, so they can do as we budget, as the budget you approve, we can continue our inspection ahead of failures. We'll have, we'll have a good handle, and as Robert said, you can calculate the cost of INI removal, where it's cost-effective, or leave it. But we want to make sure that we're not leaving things that are taking in materials and getting our sinkholes. So we will continue to collect the data through the inspection, we'll store it in GIS, and we'll calculate, come and asking in council for budget to rehab those pipe and manholes. And Mr. Gearbock, the manholes that we lined and the pipes that we did line were based on the study that was done already. So we did knock those out. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I don't.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. We're going to proceed then to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will only be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbo to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, Agenda Item 4-13, Special Events Applications and Fee Waiver. This will be a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the memo from City Clerk Royal and Community Development Director Harrington, and to approve or not to approve the 2024 special event applications and authorize, not authorize, the waiver of in-kind fees in the amount not to exceed $23,000.
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, well, I'll let Gearbo, actually, I heard Gearbo first. Gearbo will be the mover, Rice will be the second, simply to acknowledge. Clerk Royal, would you like to begin? And then, you want to begin?
Sorry, yes, quickly. I'd just like to acknowledge, I know some of these applications are more comprehensive than other applications, some are new programs. So I would advise, if you're willing, if you feel comfortable with certain events, we can always break this out and approve some and postpone others.
Yep, very good. Clerk Royal, would you like to begin? And following your remarks, we'll transition immediately to Community Development Director Harrington, and then we'll open it up for questions from the DAAS.
I just want to point out that you have the estimates for 2023 and what the real cost were for 2023. And then we have the estimates for 2024. I did leave a new sheet on your, on the DAAS, because we, I did not have the amounts for the DPW for the tree lighting and holiday parade until today. So that may change the total for the motion anyway, so.
Thank you. We can start with questions at this time? Mr. Lush?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Seal? Mr. Gearbo?
Just looking at this document that was handed out, and it says $28,000 at the bottom, fees waived. What was our budget supposed to have been, 23?
Last year's approval?
I'm just looking at this new document that this was handed out. I was trying to remember what, trying to set a figure or something, I thought, when we were initially.
I think we were, I think we were trying to target under $25,000. I don't, last year, we have the estimated amounts, so that would have been what we approved off of last year, and last year, we approved about $40,000.
My only, I've read through some of these, for all the projects I'm finding, we've done most of these, I think there's some clarifications, there's things that need to be done. The only concern that I, not a concern, actually, I think is a welcome change, is I believe it's, the music series is going to move to the parking lot? If you could explain that maybe a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess I forgot to speak on this. So the staff, myself, the fire chief, the representative from the police department, it was Deputy Chief Hartwig, and then DPW folks all got together in the conference room to just go through these all in one singular room to get all of our concerns out. So with the Salty Summer Sounds, we were all, for various different reasons, enthusiastic for it to be out of the street and into a parking lot. It assists DPW, would not have to move barricades for street closures, or have to navigate traffic. PD felt more comfortable with it, it just seemed like a safer event for fires perspective as well. So I think around the, around the board, around the table, we were all very excited about that, from just like an administrative standpoint of, we actually have to move barricades, we have to actually be out there, so.
Do you feel there was other changes that have been made that helped address the issue that we've always had about waiving the costs and all that, to maybe economize or fix some of these problems?
So cost was actually one of the things that we did not necessarily talk about at that meeting, we were simply just looking at the events for their safety and their location. Clerk Royal helped allocate the cost that we all anticipated we would spend as staff on our own items. But we do think that the staff cost, I would guess, for the Salty Summer Sounds, I haven't seen the DPW estimates, would be less than, lesser than they have previously been, provided the fact that they don't have to necessarily barricade a street close as much.
The one change I did see was under the Memorial Day Parade, it talks about tents, because I know there's a lot of things changing with how we're going to handle that. Are we renting tents? Are we buying our own and setting them up? Or, I just want to know, I don't.
We're renting.
Is it going to be large, large tents? I just questioning what it's going to look like, and if we could see a proposal. A lot of these changes, I know, have been being considered operational, but the fact that it's making a major input, and the American Legion has always put this on, I want to make sure there's some understanding and changes that are occurring with the cemetery, that the public's well aware of it before they get surprised by it. And then other than that, I don't think they had any other question. I do read, I did see something about changes coming for the Christmas parade, or the holiday lighting and the holiday parade, from the chambers aspect of raising money. I didn't know if that's going to be significant to anything that we would consider as a result of, normally, none of these events charge a lot of money, it's raised money for a nonprofit. I don't know what Chambers doing, so I just happened to see that under application.
Councilmember Rice, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. One question that I had, one of the notes, and I believe it was for Summerfest, and Mr. Harrington said, "Council should close the streets." I don't feel that that's a council issue. Was that addressed with the Summerfest folks?
So the Summerfest folks, I would have to have the police department speak on that, because they're the ones that raised that concern. They currently run this 5K, and I believe they do like a half-street closure, but just in PD's experience, it has not been necessarily the most fluid event, it's very difficult to partially close a street. So they would really like that street to just be fully closed. I don't know if that item has been communicated to the Summerfest group or not.
One of the things that I think I would like confirmation on is that any of the requests from PD or SAFD have been communicated to the chairs of the events, just as council should not be taking on a responsibility to tell Summerfest that they need to close their streets, or whatever the intention was behind that sentence. I feel like that should be a staff request that then comes back to council and says, we've discussed this, they will be doing this.
Yes, and as a matter of clarification, the authority for issuing traffic control orders, TCOs, rests with the Chief of Police, who's also our traffic engineer. So Chief Radzik has the authority to issue a temporary TCO to shut down a street. My impression of that statement is more kind of making sure we have council's blessing before we're expanding the footprint of the streets we normally close.
Sure, yeah, and again, that makes sense to me, it's just, I don't think that, you know, we're a policymaking, we're not at an event planning.
Yeah, we can always approve any event subject to a final administrative review, and that just gives us the opportunity to go back and meet again with the organizers and make those final tweaks.
Yeah, and I think that's great. And with that, I would still like to see the administrative discussions with the Pride event, the Holiday Parade, and the Jazz event, clarifying some of the questions that were still kind of out in the open about that Jazz event. There was a question about their food trucks. So just that information provided to council, I think would be great. Again, we're not in the event planning business, but having all of that clarification makes me feel more comfortable approving events and fee waivers for those organizations. And that, oh, with that, did we have any, so Jazz in the Park last year came to us late. Did we incur any fees from Jazz in the Park last year? I remember they acknowledged.
No, they did a wonderful job of covering their costs.
Good, just wanted to follow up on that. Really excited that they've gotten this in early, so that we can do our best to help them make that the event that they want it to be. That's all for me.
Very good. Councilmember Harmout, any questions?
I don't.
Easy enough.
Mayor?
Go ahead, and then I want to get Mayor Protem Dillon.
Councilmember Rice, what is it that you're looking for, for the Pride event, the Jazz event, and the other ones? What is it that you're wanting us to bring back to council?
I appreciated Mr. Harrington's memo with the discussions that they had had with Celine Area Fire Department, the police department, and DPW, making sure that everybody is on board with these events, and that all questions are addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. That's sort of along the same lines that I have. When we revamped the community events application, we did put a box on there, which was a sign off for different departments. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, and I think this may be sort of what Ms. Rice was also referring to, is that I would like to see those actually signed off, whether it's a new cover sheet that's presented to us, because in the past, we have had issues where we've approved stuff, and then the fire department says, hey, by the way, we have an issue, or there's a permit issue, or there's some sort of compliance issue that we didn't know about. And so then it looks like we're causing that hiccup. And so I think if we can just have everything upfront, and even when they're submitting their plans, understanding what exactly this is going to look like. I looked at the DEI layout, and they're talking about having restrooms and such for an event that might only have 50 people at it. And so I guess trying to understand what exactly is that? And is that the best location for it, where you're going to incur costs of restrooms? Would it be a better event to have in our park where we already have restrooms? Or something like that? So I would like to sort of see that sort of reworked a little bit. The other thing that I want to mention is that I know we've talked about this. The other thing that I want to mention is that I know we've talked about this now for a couple of years, is that the trunk-or-treat event is without question incredibly successful. And the issue is, have we outgrown the Keybang parking lot area? And is it becoming a safety issue? Um, I know that Main Street has done a great job the last two years of trying to redirect things, but we're talking about having 3,000 people in a very confined area. And would that be better off in a different area? Is there a way to combine areas, something like that, for that event? So, I, I want to make sure that we're really looking at it, because it is something that sort of rose to the top, and then sort of fell away, and understanding why it fell away. Did it just not become a priority? Did we figure out a different solution? And just from that safety aspect of it.
Um, as far as the trunk-or-treat comments, based on the PD department's review, it seemed like they were pretty comfortable with the changes that had been made this past year, with the exception of continuing to add more lighting, or making sure the lighting is facing out towards Michigan Avenue, because that is our, obviously, our biggest area of concern, making sure that area is well lit, and we're trying to keep people off of it. Um, so, so for the time being, I believe staff is comfortable with the current layout of trunk-or-treat. Certainly, if it continues to grow, we're, we're already at capacity with the design that it has.
Right, I understand that. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify, like I said, it was an issue that had been brought up, and then it just never really quite circled back. Um, one of the other things that I'd like to mention, and just sort of start a conversation about, is the Holiday Parade. I know last year, we had sort of decided that the Memorial Day Parade, we were willing to waive fees for, because of the, the type of event that it was. Um, I, I really want to kind of look back at the Holiday Parade also, and look at, that is probably one of the biggest draws to our community, and for economic development. And so, I want to sort of start weighing these out a little bit more of, you know, should there be a percentage discount, and, you know, versus on some of these where we are waiving some fees, should we, you know, understanding what they are? So, it's just a conversation I'd like to, to start with my council colleagues, and see what people have to say about it. But I do, as Ms. Rice mentioned, I would like to see a very concise memo from when we come off of this, of what has to be done for these events, if there are issues still outstanding, that it is conveyed to the people early enough so that the right accommodations are made.
Uh, before we proceed to vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, I wanted to follow up on a, a statement that Mr. Girba made, and I guess I would make this ask to DPW Director Searls and Councilmember CEO in his capacity as Chair of the Cemetery Committee. Um, I do think some considerations should be made to ensure that a tent or multiple tents that are erected at Oakwood Cemetery for the Memorial Day festivities be placed in an area that is appropriate, and that whatever is, is decided, be brought back to City Council, not so much for us to sign off on, but for us to, to just be aware of. Uh, I would also make note that the erection of tents, that should be, we should make an effort to disseminate that publicly prior to the Memorial Day Parade and program at Oakwood Cemetery, because my own sort of anecdotal observation over the past couple of years is, attendance subsequent to the parade tends to decline in a, when the weather is very hot and warm, because there isn't the appropriate amount of shade at Oakwood Cemetery. If you would like to come up and comment, that would be great, for people to, to view. And I think, others have noted this in the past, I think that our Memorial Day Parade is an event to be really proud of, and I think it's critically important to take time to celebrate our fallen soldiers and American exceptionalism, and I want to encourage people to attend not only the parade, but the subsequent event. So, I, I like the idea of tents, I just want to make sure that we're very tasteful and thoughtful about where they're placed.
Absolutely. Um, the goal is actually large canopy, not, not walled tents.
Yep.
And it, and it really is for shade. We've unfortunately had to lose some mature trees in the cemetery, and that was, that was the idea, is to find, find some places so people that don't really want to get out in the sun, or under the elements, have, have a place that's sheltered from the elements. And it'll be, it will be tasteful and, and very basic, and it's just canopy, not tent.
Good. Um, any final questions before we proceed to vote? Real quick, Mr. Girba, and then Councilmember Rice.
Um, one of the things, do you have any idea what the cost is going to be for Memorial?
I, I haven't, I haven't worked on that yet, no.
Because that's going to be a significant hit to the city, so I want to make sure, whatever that is.
We'll, we'll know upfront, and hopefully, we'll get someone to donate.
Yeah, that's what I hope.
That's the goal.
Um, one of my concerns, and I'd like the idea that we're going to have, that, you know, we're promoting these different events, and this isn't for you, Mr. CEO. Regarding the Pride event, um, I'd like to see a lot more information. I, when I look at this, and the investment that I think is going to happen, based upon even just the preliminary drawing, I have a concern with a brand-new event that could potentially cost us a lot of money. And we need to understand who's supporting it, how it's going to be paid for, because if it's being initiated by the DEI, they need to either hire, get a lot more money, or have to come to the city for funding, and I don't think we have that support identified in the budget.
Correct. Um, this would fall after next year's budget, I believe. I don't know the date of the, yet.
No, no.
It would be June, it would be before, yes, there's no dollars in this year's budget dedicated to that. Again, we can, if that's one that council wants more information on, we can postpone action on that particular approval. Certainly, if there's any others that we want approval on, otherwise, my recommendation would just be to amend the amount that is in the waiver to 29,000 for now, and then maybe add the caveat, subject to final administrative review, just so we can wrap up those loose ends.
So, the subsequent motion should change the 23,000 to 29?
Uh, yes, that would be the updated amount.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Girba?
I guess, I, for me, it was the issue of why we approved 23, and it's up to 29 now. And, um, this is a budget question. Where did that money come from, and why did it occur?
That, that came from adding DPW's costs associated with the Holiday Parade.
So, it's all associated with the parade?
Correct. There's $6,600 associated with DPW costs for the tree lighting and Holiday Parade.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rice, you had one final question before we vote?
I guess I, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. It kind of goes back to what I was saying before, I don't feel like we are a event-organizing body, but I want as much information as possible before we make these decisions. With that, um, I guess there is a question in here. Is the, is the application the only thing that has been submitted from the Celine Pride event?
Yes, to my knowledge.
So, they would have to, if they asked for additional money, they would have to then go back and request additional money, correct?
Correct, because at this point, we're not assuming that it'll require any police time, and I believe the DPW time is exclusive to just dropping off barricades.
So, would, who would approve that? The, the city treasurer?
Um, no, because it's a fee waiver, it'd be, it'd have to be City Council.
It would have to come back in front of us, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. So, if we approved this, we're not automatically giving them permission to...
You are giving them permission by approving to use the parking lot.
Yeah.
So, if it's not your intent to grant that permission, certainly delay.
But we're not giving them permission to spend additional funds.
Yes, you'd only be giving them a fee waiver of $390.
Right, correct, okay. I just wanted to make that a point. Um, okay, no additional questions, thanks.
Okay, any additional questions? Uh, one final one from Mayor Potem Dillon, before we vote on the motion to acknowledge.
Thank you. Um, one of the things is that the line item for the application fee, the $100, is not included in any kind of waiver, so every group is paying that themselves.
Correct, yes.
Including city organizations.
So, that would be, my recommendation would be that we exempt ourselves from the administrative costs associated with the waiver, if it is a city-sponsored event.
Okay. And then, my next question is, if we approve this in an amount not to exceed 29,000, we are essentially approving every single expense on here as being waived.
Correct.
Um, is that what we are planning on doing? I mean, I thought we've talked about that we weren't doing all of those things, and sort of understanding, I thought we, were we always going to waive every single fee? Or...
So, we, we've tried to narrow the fees down to just those associated with what we've agreed to waive, or expressed that we'd be willing to waive in our revised special event policy. So, that includes direct staff time, fringe benefits, direct equipment use, and any materials that we have on hand. Now, some events, like the Memorial Day Parade and the Holiday Parade, the city does provide some additional materials that have a cost, and those, those would be a direct cost to the city. But those are the only events. Otherwise, we've taken all of the things that are direct costs, like porta potty rentals, or third-party inspection fees off of this sheet, we don't waive those, or really, if it involves paying an outside vendor, we don't, we don't waive that cost, we don't incur those costs on their behalf.
And so, what is included in the line item of equipment slash supplies?
I believe that's largely associated with the use of vehicles.
Any, any equipment, signs, um, materials, we ought to make some signs sometimes, we got to replace some signs, and the vehicles and equipment to get them out there, tool caps sometimes, stuff that we use to set up the event.
Okay. Because, I mean, that's a $5,000, you know, across-the-board thing. I guess I'm just trying to understand if we're making signs, is that another thing that, you know, are we reusing these signs year after year? Are these one-and-dones? I guess, understanding, you know, because, once again, yeah, I, I'm a little concerned that we're up to, you know, $30,000 in, in public events.
So, all of the, all of the materials and equipment that we use, we use the MDOT Schedule C, so, there, there's a directed rate that we charge out, based on whatever vehicle it is, and, and we account for all of our time in, in expenses, so that it's not, it's not like, you know, the, the guys but not the truck, the, the, the guys but not the loader, you know? So, we just charge it based on the MDOT Schedule C for equipment. Um, we do reuse as much as we can, and in the last couple of large events, it's been great meeting with the event organizers after the event, to try and tighten it up, and see where we can control cost getaways.
Okay, and then what is material slash supplies, and what is the difference between those two?
Well, we still charge the Schedule C for Class A barricades, there's still a rental for those, um, pieces of equipment. We, we just go off what, what the MDOT schedule is.
And just out of curiosity, do we buy the Christmas tree?
Every year.
So, we pay for that tree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, moved by Girba, seconded by Rice, simply to acknowledge receipt of the memos from City Clerk Royal and Community Development Director Harrington. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Uh, is there now a motion to approve or not to approve, to authorize, not authorize, or to authorize with amendments or modifications, or is it the desire of this group to postpone and reconsider these items at a later date?
Move to postpone, date certain?
Uh, okay, then my recommendation would be if staff is amenable, could we do a work meeting prior to our next regular meeting at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, to, to discuss...
So, 6:00 PM on the 5th.
Six, 6:00 PM on the 5th, and then it would be enumerated as an action item, uh, under unfinished business on the regular agenda. Okay? So, that was moved by, was it moved by Dillon to postpone to a date certain, which would be, um, the 5th at 6:00 PM for a council, well, no, it would actually be, we'll have a council work meeting to discuss it, but it would be on the regular agenda, under unfinished business. Um, and that was seconded by Girba, is that correct? Is there any additional discussion on that motion? If there are additional questions that you have between now and the 5th, please email those directly to the city manager, so she can get you the data, or be able to clearly and succinctly address your concern at said meeting. Um, all those in favor of postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Uh, we move on to our subsequent items, and evidently, folks, for these remaining items, I'm not going to go from one end to the other. If you have a question, raise your hand, and I'll be happy to, to yield you the floor. Um, so, we move on to Agenda Item 24-14, Sewer Master Plan Update. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris, and to approve or not to approve the contract with OHM for sewer master plan update in an amount not to exceed $43,100.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge and to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Was that seconded by Harmout?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, City Engineer Humphris, again, we talked about this a while ago, but if you'd like to make some additional obligatory comments for the record, we would welcome that.
Yes, I, I think we talked about this in depth earlier. I just wanted to point out that this map is included in your agenda, which outlines the improvements that we're currently committed to, and we're hoping to, to reevaluate these and, and save us some money on capital improvements in the future.
Very good. There any additional questions for City Engineer Humphris? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Oh, Jack, or Mr. CEO?
I guess I just want to say, I'm a respectful skeptic in some of these items. To me, the diminishment of the kind of capacities that we're talking about, planning for the wastewater treatment plant, especially the, uh, that holding tank, and the section of the sewer, is it the sewer or the water under the river?
Um, it's the sanitary sewer that we've talked about so far, yes.
That's sanitary?
The sanitary sewer.
I guess, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort looking at that previously. Uh, I've done a lot of forecasts in my time, mostly for budgets, and I know that there's kind of a, kind of a half-science, half-magician, or magical element to it. So, uh, even though the, the kinds of, uh, the kinds of things that are taken for, is the underlying basis for making the kinds of predictions that you do, they're still predictions, and future predictions tend to be subject to error. And I guess, I don't know, but what the council that's sitting here today isn't suffering from the same kinds of things that happened many years ago, when experts got up and said, "Here's what you need to do to ensure a successful sewer system," and now, here we are today, with sometimes the public saying, "You know, why did you people just keep kicking the can down the road?" Uh, I don't want to be subject to that same kind of criticism, I probably won't be personally, but 10 years from now, council being subject to the same kind of criticism. I think that everybody does what they're, they think is the most reasonable thing to do at the time that they're confronted with the experts, and I'm just hoping that the expert opinion that we're given tonight bears fruit.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Any additional discuss, is there any additional discussion from the dais? No, then we have a motion on the floor, seconded, or moved by Girba, seconded by Harmout, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Subsequent motion is Agenda Item 24-15, Water Master Plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt from the memo from City Engineer Humphris, and to approve or not to approve the contract with OHM for water master plan in an amount not to exceed $97,100.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Girba, again, to acknowledge and to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lush. Um, City Engineer Humphris, would you care to make a few brief remarks?
Um, sure, and I think I'll maybe just take a little bit off of what, um, Mr. CEO just said. I, I, as a new staff member here, am finding that I'm often making decisions in the dark because of the lack of data that we have. Um, we're, we're, we're a small municipality, we don't have a lot of money, and I think some of our infrastructure problems are not unique to the city of Celine. Um, it's unique to all municipalities across the United States. It's a systemic problem, and, and the state of Michigan, actually, is ahead of the, the ball in investing in asset management, in doing condition assessments, in doing this inventory of our systems. And, um, I worked for two previous municipalities where our GIO system was robust, and we had lots of data to make our decisions for capital planning off of, and lots of condition assessments, lots of studies. Um, here, at the, again, not, Celine is not unique in this problem. If you go to the American Society of Civil Engineers, rating of our infrastructure across the, the United States, I think it's like a D minus for wastewater systems, a D for water systems. Um, our roads might be a C, and, and I think everyone's an expert in roads, because they drive, and people don't think about what's underneath the roads, until you don't have water, and then it's obviously a crisis. Um, so, I do agree that historic councils were going off of the, what professionals were recommending, but what I think, we as, we did not have all of the data to, staff never had all of the data to make the right analysis of our system. And I think we're taking steps in those directions to improve all of that. And I think, then I, and as far as the, um, modeling results, and that kind of plays with our water system too, when we get more refined data going in, we'll get better predictions out. And I do agree with you on the overall sense that projections are just projections, and they always are going to change, but they're going to get more refined and better as we get more data going into the system. So, that's a little bit of my soapbox about asset management and really the essential, putting the essential services first. And this, you know, we've talked a lot about our sanitary system earlier in this meeting, and this next proposal is about our water system, our drinking water system. And I don't want to go into depth of what's already written in the memo here. I think we all have a handle on our existing system is, we need to do additional analysis, the same thing on our sewer system, on our water system. Right now, we have been hindered, and we've kind of, when I, one of the very first things I brought to council two years ago when I started was the calibration of our water model. And we kind of got hindered by that when we lost our well supply number four. And we have, staff have really been struggling to, without that, without the water supply well, to get the water out into our system. There's very little we can do out, and we can't flush the hydrants like we want, we can't calibrate the water model. Now that we're getting ready to bring that well back in service, I think we're ready to the next steps with our water master plan. And like I stated earlier, engineering has been budgeting for the future, all of these studies, in hopes to refine our capital improvements in the future to spend lasting capital. So, that's really what this water master plan is in a nutshell, and be happy to answer more specific questions.
Very good. I'm excited that you, I'm excited that you brought this forward, and I'll be enthusiastically supporting the motion. Thank you very much. Are there questions for City Engineer Humphris regarding this item? Mayor Protim Dillon and then Mr. Gearbaugh?
Thank you. When I first read the first paragraph of the memo, and it said, you know, we were supposed to do this every five years, I'm like, eh, we're a bit behind. And then as I continued down, it, so it kind of talks to what you're talking about right now and what you've said, which is that we actually were on the right timeframe, and we just hit some hiccups, and so we've been delayed. So, I guess, my question is then, is the clock running, and so by the time we're done, we're going to start again, or is it once we present the study, we have five more years?
Yes, and it, yes, I think it's the second, is once we submit the study, we get to, we have five years from that point. But it really should be a living document that we are investing in and looking at annually or every other year anyways. The master plan is not intended to just be written and put on the shelf, it is intended to take, especially because our system is growing. We are, we talked about that a little bit earlier. We do have this UDA, we do have plans for growth, so we don't have a stagnant system, so we need to continuously be looking at those inputs and how that impacts our master plan as the growth actually comes in. Because we just talked about what are our projections for the UDA and what actually happens, and those could change from what we project. And so, it should be a continual living document. And we have been in correspondence with the state on our hurdles. They're well aware of, I think, our hurdles at this time, so that's why we haven't gotten it. There's no violations or anything that have been issued because of this.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gearbaugh, any questions?
Actually, just maybe a little bit of history. Have we actually ever, this city's never had a water master plan?
Not that I, no. And in fact, we didn't, because of the SAW grants, we invested in an asset management plan for the storm systems, the storm sewer system and the sanitary sewer system, but the water, no, you're absolutely right, we've never had either an asset management plan or a water master plan, which I think we need.
I wanted to give you credit for that, because when I looked at this, and I mean, this is the thing that's come up as we've worked on the different task force, having this kind of information and such, as you said, was not really there in the past. And we've now invested in your staffing and some of this other thing, and putting those resources to produce this type of thing, which I think in the, we know, in the long run, this is going to help the city. For me, understanding a little bit more, now, does this take into consideration the whole capacity and everything of our water treatment plant? I know it does talk about water towers and that type of thing, so we're going to get a full composite of what we need now and what we will need in the future?
Yes, and that is the intent. One of the things with the water modeling that I'm excited to do is to actually do an extended period simulation of our model, and to actually take into all of the starting point, which the starting point is the water treatment plant. There's pumps, there's a clear well at the water treatment plant that ultimately gets the water out into our distribution system, and so we need to start the water model there, and we can then get actually refined points. I mean, in my historic municipality, I could go put a pressure gauge out in the system in my model and tell me exactly what the pressure was out in the system. We're not there yet, and we won't be there until another year from now. But that's one of the goals of this, is to actually help incorporate all of the components of the water plant, because one can operate without the other.
Will we be doing a similar, and I should say this, a master plan for our wastewater treatment plant and that whole component?
Neither of these proposals tonight have to do with the plants. The wastewater plant, the wastewater plan is under rehabilitation right now, so we're just kind of going off of what the design criteria is for that when we're taking into account. And it's different because the water, it starts and goes out. The wastewater plant is the last, it's what, you're sending all of the collection in, so our master plan for the sewer that we just talked about is not include the wastewater treatment plant, because we're under a large rehabilitation project there.
Right, I understand that. I'm hoping that after the whole completion of the plant, everything, we will put a similar type of thing in.
Yes.
Because it makes sense to have this five-year review.
Yes, absolutely.
I will admit that, you know, when we were in the past doing it, you're right, things were thrown out there as they were needing to be repaired and such. Moving this forward, even the cost of it makes it justifiable for any kind of grants and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the dais? No, any subsequent discussion? There's a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Lesh to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Subsequent item is Agenda Item 24-16 Woodland Industrial Drive Resurfacing Design Engineering. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Engineer Humphris and to approve or not to approve the contract for engineering design services with OHM for the 2025 Woodland Drive Industrial Drive Resurfacing Project in an amount not to exceed $72,500.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Mayor Protim Dillon to acknowledge and to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seale. This is exciting, and all the people who live and work in that vicinity will be happy to know that a resurfacing project is forthcoming in the subsequent calendar year. Would you care to make a few brief remarks, and we'll open up for questions, Engineer Humphris?
Sure. First, I'd like to introduce Marcus McNamara is here tonight from OHM. We were here in early December with our transportation asset management plan, presenting the results of that. This particular proposal that's in front of you tonight has to do with our funding that we get every other year, federal funding. It comes through Watts, Washina Area Transportation System, and so we have program funding. This year, we did Clark 2023, and so for 2025, we have another about half million dollars coming from Watts. And as part of our transportation asset management plan, we identified some good contenders to maximize the use of our dollars. And we met as, one thing that's interesting to me is that we have 35 approximately miles of roads, about 15, only about 10 of those, though, nine-point-something miles are eligible for federal funding. So, of those nine roads that are eligible for federal funding, staff and OHM have met multiple times to look at those nine miles of roads, and which ones have the appropriate, can use our money, max money for our dollar, and which ones do not need utility improvements underneath them, because that obviously increases the cost of it. And that's ultimately how we landed on this project, which has a map of it in the area. And believe it or not, to get in the bidding and everything for 2025 funding, we're, we need to get going now.
Sure. Very good. Mr. McNamara, we appreciate you being here for the duration of our meeting. Thank you. Other questions? It's pretty clear-cut, but are there questions from the dais regarding this agenda item? Mayor Protim Dillon?
Thank you. What is the timeframe, I may have missed it in the memo, the timeframe for this project?
I mean, I don't know that it was outlined in the memo. The construction season would be the summer of '25. Obligation would need to occur in MDOT's, maybe I might look to Marcus to help me a little bit here. Obligation needs to occur in this coming fall, and so bidding would need to occur sometime in the winter, like a year from now.
But the project would be done over summer?
Yes, that's absolutely the plan, is to be, have the summer, the project to be done in the summer of '25, though, like a year and a half from now.
I appreciate that, just because that is a major school bus.
Oh, absolutely. And now that the school buses are moving over there, too. Yes.
Exactly, that's what, just wanted to make sure about that. The only question I had was that, obviously, this project came about because North Ann Arbor Street project is on hold.
Yes.
It's on hold for a really long time. That's a bit concerning, that it's getting like bumped out five years. Can that road withstand that? And, you know, is it going to actually take us five years to pull together all the components that we need?
So, there's two major hurdles, what we're absolutely not ready for in the coming season. So, you're right, it was programmed originally for North Ann Arbor for summer of '25. MDOT will not let you, it's because it's federally funded, MDOT has very strict guidelines on what can and cannot be done as part of its projects, and there's two big hurdles that we have with MDOT's guidelines. The first is the additional right-of-way acquisition is needed at the corner of Bennett and North Ann Arbor, and so that, just the acquisition process of that will take time and will not be ready for, when obligation would need to occur in a year from now. The bigger hurdle has to do with our lead-in copper rules, or the state's lead-in copper rules that they've mandated on us, the local municipalities. So, as part of the ongoing water service leads, we, the city, have to randomize and inspect and physically see where the connection to the water main and the lead to the house occurs, that's called the corporation stop. So, you have the water main running in the street, then you have a lead that goes out to the house, and we, the city, have to inspect it at three points. One inside the house, which we got done with our water meter change-out program, at the curb stop, which often is in like a front lawn, so that's easier to get to, and then the last spot often is underneath the road where it connects to the actual water main. So, those three spots have to be inspected, and because Ann Arbor has older homes that fall within the category that we are requiring this, all of that work has to be done before we can do the road work. And so, I don't know the exact timeframe, I think we have multiple years to do the...
It's getting done this year.
No, it's...
Ann Arbor Street will be inspected this year.
Okay, Ann Arbor Street will be inspected this year. So, that's what, so those are the major hurdles of why it can't go this coming season. And we just moved it into the next available slot in 2029.
Okay. So, then there would be, if you could check those boxes of the lead-in copper lines and the right-of-way acquisition, you know, would it then kind of go back into the rotation of it may come up before '29, or is it just found its home now in that time slot?
I think we, right now, that's where we've moved it to, as far as in the transportation or the, whatever the tip stands for with Watts. But that is where we moved, because right, we moved this project to '25, Woodland between Maple and Ann Arbor to '27, and North Ann Arbor to '29. It's where we have it right now, to allow us time to do those things.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh, before we vote?
Yeah, when you just mentioned Woodland between Maple and Ann Arbor, I would much rather see Ann Arbor Street done before Woodland, because I think this issue has been, we postponed this thing for a number of years, so whatever we need to do in terms of getting those right-of-ways and everything, I think this council needs to either look into that legal approach sooner than later. Because 2027 sounds like our next opportunity, Woodland probably could last longer than...
And the concern with letting Woodland go beyond its current condition is that it gets more expensive to fix. So, we're trying to get the right fix at the right time and utilize. So, Ann Arbor's estimate was, I want to say closer to $3 million, where Woodland is a million-dollar project. This project that you're looking at tonight is about a million-dollar project. And as we talked about in our transportation asset management plan, when you do the worst first, I mean, you're spending a lot of money, but if we spend just a little bit of money to, we can gain 20 more years out of these other roads without having to spend the extra money if it fails beyond its point. And the concern with Woodland between Ann Arbor and Maple is, it's getting to that point where it's showing signs of getting past that way to save our money wisely.
Just my concern again, it's the 111-year-old water main on Ann Arbor Street, and we keep postponing it, and we keep postponing the road, and I want to see all that done, because this rust solution has not occurred. Whether, either we're realigning that pipe, lining that pipe, or we can replace it, it needs to happen sooner than later, and four years off is too much of a delay.
Well, and I agree with you on the water main, absolutely, yep.
If we take care of some of the issues that Mayor Protim Dillon questioned you on and you addressed, in your professional opinion, could we be in a position to be utilizing federal funds to initiate the Ann Arbor Street project in 2027?
I think we can look at that and see what makes sense with our budget and the existing conditions of the roads, and yes, I think we can look into it.
I'm in favor of the motion that's on the floor.
Yes.
I think it needs to be done, but I concur with the sentiment that if there's a way to fast-track that Ann Arbor Street project, I think that would be advantageous for a number of reasons. So, I look forward to having an additional conversation on that. Councilmember Rice, very quickly, before we vote.
One quick additional question about that is, what are the state's requirements for lead pipe replacement? Like, what's the cutoff date for municipalities on that? I know that there's continuous talk of updating that and making that happen in an even faster timeline, and will that be something that we need to...
Yes, I believe, I'm going to let Larry talk on this, I believe they've recently changed the actual date of the house constructed, and he's well more versed on that.
Usually, Eagle's the biggest lead thing, but EPA cut our timeline down by five months. I have to have the first round of random inspections done at the property line in October. We do have funds budgeted to contract that out. We're going to try and take advantage of grabbing a larger municipality's contract for their unit pricing. On Ann Arbor Street, before we're allowed to apply for federal money, we do have to identify all of them. I think Tashia probably forgot about the culvert that's in very, very bad shape under Woodland.
Thank you.
That's being done this summer while school's off. That one's bad. But we, over 20 years, we're going to have to identify, and if we find it, replace it all the way into the home. The beautiful part, as you guys are, remember, we did our water major change-out program, we got into like 99.5% of the homes, we have that done. That's usually the hard one to get, because you got to get inside the house. We'll have our required 20% done, 7%, excuse me, 7% done of the housing stock older than 1986. We'll have that done in time for October. But if we find them, we do have to replace them.
Okay, very good. If there's nothing further, there's a motion on the floor moved by, well, actually, that was questions. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? There is none. This motion on the floor moved by Dylan, seconded by Seale to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. Last item for Engineer Humphris is Agenda Item 24-17 2024 Local Road Resurfacing Program Design Engineering. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Engineer Humphris and to approve or not to approve the contract with OHM for 2024 Local Road Resurfacing Design Engineering in an amount not to exceed $71,500. Is there a motion, folks?
Move to approve and authorize.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lesh. Thank you both. Engineer Humphris, would you like to begin?
Sure, and this is, this is work that is scheduled for this coming construction season. As part of, this is a direct follow-up to our transportation asset management plan. When we were here in early December, we talked about wanting to, we had a little bit of a fun balance in our road, and wanting to hit a lot of the roads that were in the right spot for what is called capital preventative maintenance measures. And there's a slide in your, from our December, from our presentation in December that talks about those options for capital preventative maintenance. So, unfortunately, a lot of our roads are in worse condition and are going to cost more per mile to do, but this, this list of roads, we get to hit a lot of neighborhoods, get a lot of roads by doing these preventative maintenance measures. It's a combination of micro-surfacing and like mill and fills, taking off a little bit of asphalt and putting a little bit of asphalt back. There's a map included in the packet that outlines the areas, and...
Can you articulate those for the public's benefit, those who may be watching tonight or may be watching subsequent to the conclusion of tonight's meeting?
As far as the different treatments?
No, areas in which we hope to hit in the ensuing construction season.
Absolutely. So, the first area would be the Wildwood subdivision, and that's all for Cape Seal treatment. We've got the Arboretum subdivision that has a micro-surface treatment and some resurfacing. We did, if you will, like the dead ends that were left over from other projects, like South Harris Street and Rizden Drive over, that we've done some total reconstruction projects over the last couple of years in that area. Also, a couple other of the courts off of Old Creek are included. And then, on the west side of town, it's Saline River Drive, and the very north edge of Torwood. And the only reason we didn't do all of Torwood is because we ran out of funding, and it makes sense to start at the north and then, or in the sub, and then come back and do out, so you don't have construction equipment going over the new roads. have construction equipment going over the new roads. And there is a map included in the packet that people can access to.
Very good. That's helpful. We're able to execute those projects. That's, that'll please a lot of people and make a pretty significant impact in our local streets.
Yes, and these will be quick projects. As we know, this summer, we were doing a large utility project on Maple Road, and that seemed like a very long road project, but it was actually a very successful deep sewer project with a road resurfacing on the top. So these projects will be much quicker. We will be in and out of the neighborhoods, and we hope to do them all this summer in 2024. And we need to get going to do that.
Indeed. Okay, excellent. Are there questions for Engineer Humphreys? Mr. CEO?
I had a couple. I see there's two different terminologies, it seems, used on this page and this page. On the first page of OHM, it says Cape Seal. Is that, is overband crack seal? Is that the same thing?
No. And I'm gonna ask Marcus to elaborate a little bit on the different techniques.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so quickly, so I think people are generally familiar with what's called a chip seal. The county does a lot of that. That's not typically an appropriate treatment in an urban setting. It's a rough surface. It's not good, gets riding bikes, rollerblades, et cetera. So what a cape seal is, is a chip seal with an overlay, a thin, a micro-surface overlay, which provides actually more durability than chip seal alone, with a relatively thin cross-section and a smooth surface that's appropriate for neighborhood streets.
Okay. I know what the milling overlay is. What's the micro-surface?
Micro-surface and slurry seal are sometimes interchangeable terms. The chemistry is different in the product, but to the average user, you don't see, that's typically around three-eighths of an inch at max thickness overlay of the street. And there are some differences, but yeah, micro-surface is just a thin asphalt overlay without the milling.
Is that micro-seal just a spray-on?
Excuse me?
Is that just sprayed on the?
No, it's, it's applied with a treatment train. So it's, it's an aggregate and an emulsion, asphalt emulsion-based product that's spread through an auger system on the rear of the construction equipment.
Thank you.
Are you going to any additional questions, Mr. Girba?
When you mentioned that micro-surface, now that just stays on the asphalt surface, it's not gonna go into the pans, the concrete pans or any of that? Because that's a problem we've had in the past, and it destroyed the concrete, and we had to replace all the code we got.
There'll be provisions in the specification that will, if that happens, the contractor's responsible for that. It will qualify that to say, part of sealing the road surface is getting that joint at the curb line. So they typically do overlap the curb by an inch or two. That's part of the process. But if they're sloppy with the work, and it's getting into the curb and certainly into the catch basin, that's a huge issue. And the specification in the contract would not permit that.
That's been a past mistake this city has made. We had to replace all of the mills, and now we're doing pretty much every time we replace the streets. So it's unfortunate that we have to incur that cost. So I want to make sure.
The specifications, this type of work has come a long way in the last 15 years or so. A lot of different materials have been tested. Actually, MDOT has a spec now. They did, five years ago, they didn't. Statewide, four of these. It has provisions in there for shoddy work, basically. So the city would not be responsible for any of those types of costs.
And this one is, as to your question, I understand this is most of our idea of our new plan, going towards repairing roads and things before they completely fail on it. What roads are we actually rebuilding this year? Because, you know, I've got to sell this, and there's some major roads that have not been done in decades that are falling apart.
That's, and you're right. This, this year, and as part of our transportation asset management plan, we had proposed to spend a lot of money this first year to get ahead of the curve on those roads that are ready for, in the prime condition for these cheaper treatments, if you will, and postponing the reconstructions to, so we don't have a reconstruction proposed for this coming season.
And micro-surface, that thing again, how long does that last?
That typically adds seven to 10 years of the pavement life. So that would be to say that in seven to 10 years, the road's back to the condition it is when you apply the treatment.
Okay.
And I will qualify one thing Tessa said a little bit. The pink lines on the map, which are the full-depth asphalt, move and replacement, and Torwood primarily, I think to the average resident, that's viewed as a full reconstruct. Because we do, if there are spot curb or shattered driveways, those get handled with those types of projects. The difference between a full, when the engineer uses the term full reconstruct, we're talking about typically associated with utility project, digging up the aggregate base under the road, and kind of rebuilding from the, from the ground up. These, and if you recall, actually, we completed, I think we presented it with the road program. We did pavement cores all around the city, so we know how much asphalt we have to work with, and we know what's underneath it. So all these were, projects were strategically selected based on what we know is out there. But to the, for the people that have access to the map, the average resident, the streets that are highlighted pink are gonna be a full reconstruct, I think.
And I'd like to add too, I've already started working with PR General Massey to get together some pictures and some examples of these different types of treatments, because we know it's not gonna be everyday vernacular for most residents to understand what type of treatment is being applied to their road.
Any additional questions, Mr. Girba? Councilmember Rice?
And then with that city managerial tool, will you also be reaching out to these specific neighborhoods and saying?
Yes, we have the HOA contacts and letting them know.
Any additional questions, Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. I'm a very visual person, so I love maps and things that are color-coded. So thank you very much for that. I want to talk just for a quick second about Celine River Drive. That's my street. And it does need a little bit of love. But I've also saw listed on another map that we had tonight, which is part of the West Belt, where it has a couple of grade four and grade five issues that have to be addressed. So are we gonna seal this road and then come back and dig it up to fix things?
Well, that's what's great about the rehabilitation from the surface, is that we don't need to dig up the sewer to do the, so the rehabilitation program that we're currently undertaking and starting with, that Larry talked about earlier, is, is not replacement of. So the only time we really should be digging up a sanitary sewer is if we need to increase the capacity of it. And so, and that, so I guess the short answer to your question is no, we would not need to dig up to do the, in the rehabilitation from the surface.
Fantastic. I really appreciate that. And I do appreciate Ms. Rice's comment about being proactive and contacting. Anyone that's been down there knows that Celine River Drive is a dead end. And when they redid that road the last time, they didn't tell us that we would all be trapped for five days without being able to move our vehicles. So knowing in advance would definitely help. And I appreciate, just quickly, that Torwood is getting pink, because those roads in which I walk my dog are actually failed roads, especially the Banock Road. That one is desperately in need of some, some attention. So I appreciate these efforts. I wish we had more to show on our thing, but I know that there's only a limited amount of dollars, and there's an endless supply of roads. So looking forward to seeing every part of it each year.
Very good. Are there any subsequent questions for staff or for our guests from OHM? No? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? That's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Lesch, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say have it. And Mr. Girba, are you an aye?
Aye.
Very good. I say have it. Motion carries unanimously. We move on to the last action item, which is 24-18 Downtown Parking, Downtown Public Space, Public Space Design Proposal, excuse me. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington and to authorize or not authorize the City Treasurer to amend and increase line item 101-701-801-001, and to approve or not to approve the service agreement for OHM and Carlisle Wardman Associates in an amount not to exceed $57,000.
Move to acknowledge, authorize, and approve.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge, authorize, and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Harmout?
It was me.
Rice, excuse me. Seconded by Rice. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. CEO. Mr. Harrington, do you want to care to make some brief comments for the record?
Yeah, so I'll try to be brief. So beginning to, we're beginning to implement the items per rolled out in our master plan. As I mentioned several times in that memo, specifically page 69, in our downtown development goals. The location or visioning of a public, dedicated public space in our downtown is one of those items that we addressed in that master plan. The initiative has many academic justifications about how it will attract private investment, what it does for community, general concepts of placemaking, but it's also something that our residents and businesses have asked for over the years very explicitly. We were looking to work with a partner that could create something rather actionable and pragmatic, and develop something that the city could use to go and pursue grants, as well as develop something the city could use itself, because it's, it's public land, it's land in our control, it's not visioning what we would like to see happen with someone's private property. We received a commitment from the redevelopment-ready communities, Arm of MEDC, for $40,000 to go for this $57,000 contract, which is about a 75-25 split with the city. And to sum it up, our proposal is to investigate our current conditions with these three centrally located parking lots, hold groups of businesses, citizens, and council together to talk about what we want to see out of any sort of public space that would be designed, drafted design with review meetings with these same stakeholders, probably in a work-meeting-type format, and then do a final design submittal. And that final design is gonna have several things. It's gonna have cost estimates, it's going to be practical and feasible, and it's going to be something that we're intending to take into MEDC's grant season, whether it's the revitalization placemaking program, or other options like Matchon Main, which is a little bit different, or other placemaking grants the state is trying to roll out as we speak. The timeline is to have this wrapped up in late spring, early summer. And I think that the product that we've worked out with OHM and CWA will be incredibly competitive, looking at who's been awarded those types of grants in the past. They really like renderings, they like things that are shovel-ready, and they like to know the price tag of those things. So we're really trying to be pragmatic with that vision, unlike some of the, some of the past downtown visioning we've done as a community.
Great. I'm very excited that we're moving forward on this. As you noted, this was discussed and outlined in the master plan. It was also one of three issues that was addressed by the 2023 City Council when we wrote letters to our state, federal, and county officials about designating some additional funds into our community. So I'm glad that we're moving forward with this, and I will be enthusiastically supporting the motion. Are there questions for the Community Development Director? Mr. CEO?
Just to buttress this argument that you've made, Mr. Harrington, at the last SMCog meeting, they talked about placemaking and the kind of things that placemaking does to attract other entities to the community. And I'm totally in favor of this project as a result of that kind of effort.
Any additional comments or questions? Ms. Rice, before we vote?
Just a quick comment that I think that this is a great, like, blast into something tangible, so that we can start moving on all of these things that everyone keeps saying, the money is out there, the money is out there. Well, we need to have tangible plans, we need to start actually putting this stuff down on the paper. So I commend you for jumping on this.
And trying to get some of the money that is out there, the funds, to get the more money that's out there. And I will add, there was a consideration about residential stuff earlier, that we are in the process of applying for yet another grant through NHTDA, actually, that'd be in the range of $40,000 to $50,000. And the first-line item of what we submitted for that was re-looking at our downtown density and creating renderings of what that density would actually look like, so we can show our residents that a four-story building in our downtown that has that classic historic facade is not only something that we can guarantee by controlling it with our zoning code, but really does actually fit the character of our city, and makes our downtown more, more vital is the right word, but lifts it up even more.
That's great. Thank you.
There's no subsequent discussion. There is a motion on the floor moved by Girba, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge, to authorize, and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say have it. The motion carries unanimously. We come now to the discussion portion of our agenda, reports and announcements. I'll start to my right and end to my left. Councilmember Lesch, any reports or other announcements?
Just that the Arts and Culture Committee met, and we have a full quorum finally.
Very good. Councilmember CEO, any reports or board and commission announcements?
Environmental Commission met last week. We outlined what we intend to do for the future. Sounds like a lot of work out of us.
Very good. Mayor Potem Dillon, reports or other announcements?
None of my committees have met recently since our last meeting. The upcoming fire board meeting will be the first Wednesday in February.
Mr. Girba, Board and Commission reports or any other announcements?
Planning we'll be meeting this week to discuss the expansion of Condat.
And Lieber as well.
And Lieber, sorry.
Edition at Lieber. That's the more substantive of the two, actually. Councilmember Rice, any reports, announcements, updates from boards and commissions?
Parks Commission is going to have one opening remaining. We spent a lot of time, about three, three and a half hours last week, goal-setting, and we'll be finalizing those. With those goals comes a lot of community involvement. So please listen in throughout the year, and different ways that we want to get the community involved in some of the project proposals that we may have coming forward. We also have new members on the DEI Committee. Our previous chair, Kirsten Woodside, has stepped down, and I want to thank her for all of her tremendous work getting the committee from a task force to a commission level. And with that, we still have a couple of seats open. We did approve some new members tonight. Really glad to have Pastor Kimberly from Celine Presbyterian on board. And so we're always looking for new members, even if you do not want to be a member, official commission member. We do hold open meetings on Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month at 5:30. So please feel free to join us in the conference room here at City Hall. We're gonna have a lot of stuff going on this year that has community involvement aspects. So we're always open to hearing some new ideas and seeing what, what other types of things are out there that the community can participate in, and getting some things implemented here at City Hall, so that we can make this a more diverse and equitable community. So reach out to me if you have any questions. That's all.
Very good. Councilmember Harmout, any reports, announcements, border commission updates?
Yes, the Historic District Commission met earlier this month on the 11th, and we talked about the budget for training for the new, new commission members, including myself, learning more about the rules and regulations surrounding Historic District parameters. And I know that we're targeting the area at the Renshler Farm as a Historic District, so that's what we have. And I know that there's still availability on many of the commissions, so I just want to echo what other council members have said, to reach out and see if we can get more people involved.
Yep, we'll have probably several appointments to consider at our next meeting, and maybe some bad news, and maybe some good news. Mr. Lesch will have probably a replacement for you on Parks. So we appreciate you filling in for one, one additional month. I don't have any border commission updates at this time. However, I did speak to the city manager in advance of tonight's meeting and wanted her to address the upcoming utility bills.
Yes, just a reminder to residents that the city recently changed its utility billing cycle. We are now on a more typical calendar year quarter system. That means for the last billing cycle of 2023, it contained four months, so September through December. Those bills will be mailed Wednesday next week, so you should start to see them towards the end of the week or the beginning of the following. You do have until March 1st to pay your bill, and the new billing cycle has already begun, that's sort of January 1. So moving forward, it'll be a three-month cycle with a very similar timeframe for repayment.
So, yes, don't be alarmed, bills will be, cover four months. Your upcoming bill will cover four months and not three. But as the city manager indicated, it will correct itself in the subsequent quarter. Any additional comments or questions? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. I wanted to make mention of, earlier on the consent agenda, we kind of closed out the meter program. And that's fine that we had done that, it's great. What I wanted to ask is that we still have a small number of properties that have chosen not to replace their meters. And they are assessed a nominal fee each quarter for, for having to have manual reads. I would like to have this body consider whether that fee should be increased. It has been in place now for a full year, and we do have yearly, you know, cost increases. So whether we should be looking at increasing that fee also, and in my opinion, it should be to the maximum amount allowable.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Tua, do you want to comment briefly on the Celine Area Fire Department Revised Mutual Aid Agreement, which was presented at the December board meeting? It was the decision of the Fire Board not to take formal action at that time, but to send the document back to the four respective municipalities to review and comment on. The understanding is it would be voted upon, either approved or rejected at our next meeting, which is two weeks from this coming Wednesday. And I believe both Mayor Potem Dillon and I had provided you copies subsequent to our December meeting for you to review, and also to have city's legal counsel chime in on as well.
That is correct. Both myself and legal counsel have reviewed the agreement. This is being provided now to council as a kind of for-year information. The basis of it is that the Washtenaw Area Mutual Aid Association is changing its governance structure from a nonprofit to a governmental entity under the Urban Cooperation Act. So in doing so, all the participating entities need to enter into a new agreement format, and the assets of that organization need to be transferred to the new entity. This, this raises no specific concerns in the format that is provided in for our legal counsel. There was one change later on, which I believe is now reflected, to have the correct signers on it. But otherwise, this is viewed as an operational measure by the SAFD.
And would it be your opinion to have this on our subsequent council agenda for council to authorize and approve?
It is the, the advice of our legal counsel, that council does not need to take specific action. This would be a receive and file.
Okay. So what I would ask then is between now and our next meeting, if you do have any comments or concerns, to please relay those to city staff or legal counsel and bring them forward. If I don't hear any objections subsequent to our next meeting, between council member, excuse me, Mayor Potem Dillon and myself, we will convey that to the Fire Board, and then likely vote in the affirmative to, to approve the agreement.
Just a quick question. When you mentioned updated the signers, what signers are?
I believe the original document had the chair and the fire chief, and it should be the chair and the vice chair of the.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, when, when was the date of the meeting? When do you want us to have your comments?
By the next city council meeting. Our, our next Fire Board meeting is two days subsequent to our next council meeting. So we meet on the 5th, and Fire Board meets on the 7th.
Thank you.
At this time, we come to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question a city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is, of course, requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
Okay. Good evening again, Chang Ming Fan. I'd like to continue to talk about the topic of climate change and our proposal to help M H C P plan, which is passed law already led by Governor Whitmore. already led by Governor Whitmore. And the topic I dropped there at BABA, B-A-B-A, is the one which is emphasized with that document, Buy America, Build America, in order to change the way we generate energy. Here is the problem. We are in the Great Lakes. We are far away from off, from, from the sea. So therefore, the wind generation, which is so important to replace the fossil fuel energy, it is the problem, but also opportunity for us, especially in our Celine located Great Lake area. And we have water, and we have land, and we have the wind. How to do that? So SALT initiative, I presented to you, and Celine Area School Board of Education 18 months ago, it's just one of the formula to solve this problem and then create the new opportunities. And how to do that, that's why I'd like to formally make appointment with Mr. Mayor, Jack Seal, and including other members of the council to present it to you. And Jack suggests that to talk with the, our staff and whoever, make appointment. I can be available anytime within these 10 days. What we have to talk about SALT initiative, Celine Area Light Tower, that's SALT as a ball. However, this high-rise, super-light, super-bright, super-cheap, super-lightweight, super-smart frame LED structure is for multiple purpose. One is generate the electric, the energy based on the wind, solar, and charged energy from the cloud. Longshore, I need you give me the permission to present to you how to do it, and why we, we can do it here and also follow the rules, which is Buy America, Build America. And extremely simple and extremely friendly, extremely efficient. Before, do I have 30 seconds?
Only three.
Three seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this evening? Clerk Royal, were there any individuals who wrote to us and wanted their remarks read at this time?
No.
Easy enough. Then please note our upcoming meetings, including a strategic planning session next Monday, which is usually the Monday we have off, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. If there's nothing further to be brought before this body, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting at 9:08 PM.
So move.
Moved by Girba, seconded by Mayor Potem Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say have it. Meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you all.